Fair Nevin?
Here.
Councilwoman Duff?
Here.
Councilman Renahan?
Here.
Councilman Rourke?
Here.
Councilman Thomas?
Here.
Councilman Unglesby?
Here.
All right, a minute approvals from November 14th.
Submit.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you. Tammy, when you're ready for the manager's report and the Main Street update.
I am ready. For the downtown revitalization project, town staff attended the fifth partnering meeting last month. Construction's ahead of schedule because of the change in the sequence of construction. If you remember, originally they were gonna... The project was engineering stages, so the Baltimore Gas and Electric... Baltimore Gas was gonna go through their gas line, and then they were gonna have the stormwater go through later, and then they were gonna have the sidewalks, and just everything was gonna be in phases. But CJ Miller had requested that they work as much as they can in one area at the same time. So that has allowed them to be ahead of schedule once he was given approval to work differently. And you'll see that they're working at the stormwater... The stormwater pipe in front of Old Town Grill. Baltimore Gas and Electric has moved out of that section. They'll be at Gil Avenue around the 20th. They'll have to backtrack a few weeks later to put in a new gas line connection to the crematory at E Lines. And you'll see if, weather permitting, they wanna put sidewalks in around the southern part of the project, around Old Town Grill. They wanna put in the curb and driveway aprons and hopefully sidewalks, but in order to pour concrete, the weather has to be above 40 degrees for a certain amount of time. So I don't know if they'll have the weather to do that, so hopefully they will. Our water project, as everyone knows, replaced a 1936 pipe under Main Street, south to Ralph Avenue. It stopped at Ralph Avenue. After Ralph Avenue, we just replaced the house and business connections.
Because that pipe dates only to the 1980s.
Because that pipe only dates the 1980s. But anyway, they... We were finished with our water project, with the infrastructure, before they were finished engineering the stormwater. So State Highway engineered the stormwater portion of the project with existing conflicts with our water connections in that area south of Ralph. So after discussions, several discussions between the town, State Highway, CJ Miller, it was decided that CJ Miller will relocate our water connections, and State Highway will bear the cost. And these lines have to be relocated or replaced in whole because, thanks to Kevin, we have in the contract that the state... There's no splicing allowed of our water connections. So they'll be in whole and as new as they were when we put 'em in, just last year. And then, just to let you know, State Highway does not allow construction crews to work a business day before a holiday and a business day after. So there'll be no work on Main Street from... On Friday, December 22nd, to Tuesday, December 26th. So, weather permitting, they'll resume work on Wednesday, December 27th. Northside Estates, the entire infrastructure of the road and stormwater and water and sewer is finished. And they're doing things a little differently. They are preparing the lots to build six spec homes. Because they build the homes, they typically don't customize, and then they sell a built home. They did say, however, if a builder was interested in customizing a house, they would work with them. So when the first six homes are sold, they'll build six more. And they think that all the houses will be built by the end of next year. We did the Shop Local eight days a week passport program. The program was well received, and it is growing, because last year we only had 36 people submit completed passports where they had gotten eight stickers from eight different businesses. They submit 'em for the drawings. And this year, 97 passports were submitted. So hopefully the promotional... The promotion increased foot traffic to our local businesses. I also attended the Carroll County Downtown's meeting. We were coordinating a bus trip between the municipalities for Saturday, February 10th, where riders would spend a little time in each town. After I wrote my report, we have decided to postpone it to the spring, so we could spend a little more time in each municipality, maybe do a walking tour, or visit more businesses. So that's gonna happen later. With our audits, the town's contract with Lindsay &amp; Associates ended this fiscal year. And we have an audit, RFP, for years 2018, 2019, and 2020. And that was released on Monday, December 11th, and the bids are due January 4th. And the award will be made at the January 9th Town Council meeting. Year-end, Cheryl's preparing for calendar year-end to 2017. Some of these items include updating payroll taxes for 2018, preparations of our W-2s, 1099s, and preparation of the 1095s for verification of healthcare coverage, which you need to do for Obamacare. The Maryland Racing Committee Commission held a public hearing last month for the proposal of the off-track bedding site that will be operated by the Maryland Jockey Club in a portion of the Greenmount Station Restaurant Building. Several representatives from the town were in attendance, including Commissioner... Well, including Mayor Nevin, council members, Duff, Rourke, and Renahan, and me. And then Commissioner Weaver was there also. The Racing Commission issued final approval for the proposed facility. And they said they were hoping to be operational by the end of the year, which, no, I don't think that's gonna happen. Controller French visited Hampstead on December 7th. He visited Fuchs, St. John's United Methodist Church, and the Mill. Commissioner Weaver, Delicate Harris's representative, Councilmember Rourke, and myself, we were in attendance. Delicate Shoemaker and Senator Reedy joined us at St. John's, as the controller presented a fifth grader, Mackenzie Greenwood, with an award for her little free pantry. It's the William Donald Schaefer Helping People Award. We're holding a Board of Zoning Appeals case, A-221, on Thursday, December 14th. This is a request by NISAP, Northeast Social Action Plan, for a variance to reduce a rear yard setback at their facility at 1046 South Carroll Street to 24 feet in order to accommodate construction of a 72-by-32 storage addition on the rear of their existing building. Public Works has been working with the two wells, 35 and 36, that they wanna connect to the new pump house. They had finished the first round of dry and wet testing on these wells, and at this time, MDE is reviewing the results. Another round of wet testing needs to be conducted on these wells, as per request of MDE, before the wells can go online. We haven't received enough rain to conduct a wet test on the wells yet. We have a stormwater facility at Sycamore Drive, and the outflow culvert at this facility has recently been... At this facility needs to be replaced. This stormwater facility has recently been reclassified as a dam. Since this facility is now a dam, several permits are needed from MDE before the work can begin. So it's a lot more work, since it's a dam and not just a stormwater facility.
It's a stormwater facility, and it's regulatory creep.
Yes. And so the town's working with the Antietas system, attaining all these permits, because one of the regulations now is a licensed engineer has to engineer the project for us to repair, or for us to replace the culvert.
You should talk about the next one.
New staff?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, talked about it last week. Okay. So we have a new administrative assistant, Misty Strivik. And we also have a new Public Works employee, Jared Boone. And they began work on Monday, December 4th. So training is going underway, and they're both doing very well.
Jared is replacing Roger, who I'll get to in a minute. Not really replacing him, but...
He can't be replaced.
No, that's... We're moving people around, which we'll get to in a minute as well. And Misty is a new hire to help with all the Main Street events that are going on, Main Street revitalization that's going on, help with the paperwork at Public Works. It's the first new administrative assistant we've had in the 22 years I've been here, whatever number of years I've been here.
New position, yes.
So she's, I think, been a good addition. And I thank Marlene and Jim for being part of that interview process. Okay, oversight. Unless you have any questions for Tammy, there was a lot going on there. Marlene?
Yes, sir.
You're up.
Okay. The Christmas market, that was December the 1st and 2nd, was a huge success. We had 10 summer vendors participate, along with the Hampstead Police Department and the Hampstead Train Station Committee. Customer attendance this year was 1,535 people compared to 1,454 from last year. And Sharon says I still miss counting people, so we'll see. I've gotta do it a different way. I have so many people to thank, I feel like I'm at the Emmys. Pastor John Rudolph and the congregation of St. John's Church were unbelievably supportive and helpful. Their youth group prepared food on Friday night at no cost to the customers. And our market volunteers, Keith and Lois Johnson, prepared food on Saturday and did an amazing job. And the venue itself was really spectacular. Our customers and our vendors had so much more room to move around. The rooms were already decorated for Christmas, so we didn't have to do that. And we also enjoyed many other wonderful amenities. The Hampstead Train Station Committee and Councilman Thomas outdid themselves by sponsoring the event again this year. Nora Ward made all the outside directional signs, which we really appreciated. Wayne and members of the congregation moved furniture to make way for the vendors, and it was really an amazing collaborative effort. And we also wanted to thank the gentleman from Public Works Department, who came bringing tables for use by the police department. In appreciation for the church's commitment to the market, a nice donation was made to the church from the market and the train station. And we just hope we're invited back next year, because we had a great time. It was wonderful. The only other thing I have, the last Saturday in November... The last Sunday, I'm sorry, in November, Sharon and I visited the Baltimore Farmers' Market under the JFX, and we actually live to tell about it. We made extremely positive contacts with vendors...
Just what Baltimore needs, nice...
Yeah, I know. Hey, I grew up there, so it's okay. We made extremely positive contacts with vendors who offer products that are not currently available at the market. And we handed out a dozen vendor applications. So we'll be following up with these folks over the next few weeks to see if they're interested in joining, adding a Saturday market. That's it.
Okay, thank you. And it was a good time at the Christmas lighting. Wayne?
The Hampstead Train Station was proud to sponsor the Christmas Farmers' Market again this year. Like Marlene said, the people at St. John's United Methodist couldn't be nicer people. We really enjoyed it, and I'm pretty sure we're gonna go back next year. We've also started talking about putting a train layout down in the kitchen area for next year, so it's really positive. The train station has its raffle going for a train set donated by... Toy Trains Unlimited out of Hanover, very nice people. The raffle's gonna be on the 18th, still a chance to get a ticket if you want. And the drawing will be at Jiffy Mart at 7:00 on the 18th, so we get some unsuspecting child who walks through the door to draw it for us. The... I'd like at this time to thank the supporters that we've had for the train station this past year. Hampstead Auto Parts, Carquest, Heisen Appliances, Carroll True Value Hardware, Hampstead Pre-Owned, Rush Family Dentistry, Eliana's Restaurant, Family Pharmacy of Hampstead, Farmers &amp; Merchants Bank, Boemark Electric, St. John's United Methodist Church, of course, the town of Hampstead, Work in Progress Studios, and most recently, Steam and Mad Crabs. They've all made donations to the train station to help support our projects, especially Music in the Park, which was a big success, which we plan to do again this coming year. And the train station held their annual meeting this past Thursday night, on the 7th, and everybody that was in office got re-elected to their position. Good time was had at Eliana's Restaurant. That's all I have for the train station. Tree Commission, after we got done with our big planning up at North Carroll Farms, we had 98 trees left over. I talked to Councilman Unglesby, and Westwood Park had a need for some trees to replace some that had perished in their tree bank, so we planted another 98-some trees with the help of Westwood Park and Nixon Associates. So we're very happy to get those trees planted. We still have to get some shelters around there, but I believe I've blown my budget for the year. So the Tree Commission will probably start meeting in January, planting some spring plantings, and we'll find the money somewhere. That's all I have.
Thank you, Wayne. Planning zoning, Jim?
Okay. Planning and zoning commission of Hampstead met on Wednesday, November 15, 2017. First up was a request for a change in signage at Chaney Brook &amp; Associates. They're located at 1388 North Main Street. That's the house on the corner of Main Street and Hampstead Mexico Road 482. The existing sign, which is erected in the front yard, will be removed, and they're installing two new signs. One will be on the front of the building, between the first level and the second level. The second is on the rear of the building, above the rear entrance. They're very nice, sandblasted signs, and they both will be illuminated by an exterior light shining on them. These are exactly the type of signs that we're trying to encourage people to use in the Main Street revitalization area. They were fine with code, and they were approved. Next up was the introduction of the concept plan for Melanie Acres. This is a six-home development that is looking to build off of Dana Avenue. Dan Staley from DRS &amp; Associates made the presentation. We were given notes and comments from various departments of Carroll County government. Most of the concerns from the county were just corrections that needed to be made on the concept plan drawings, from a technical point of view, basically referring to every lot with the same number throughout all the drawings that needed to be corrected, and some other stuff. There's also some concerns about groundwater runoff that needs to be addressed before Land and Resource Management will sign off on the plan. There was also discussion about a visual barrier separating the backyards in the new Melanie Acres development, and the backyards of the existing houses on Gloucester Circle. All parties were in agreement that a natural barrier of trees would be the best way to go. Also was pointed out that the type of houses being built should be compatible with the existing neighborhoods, so they fit in, and it doesn't look like it's an separate entity. Another point that was brought up was that all sidewalks in the development must be five feet wide to meet ADA requirements. So what they have to do now is they have to redo the drawings, send them back to all the county agencies. All the county agencies have to sign off on it, give them the green light, and then they will be back to see us again, and that's either gonna be in January or February. And that's all I have.
Thanks, Jim. Joe Parks?
Yes, we've received confirmation that the Department of Natural Resources has approved the installation of new skateboard equipment. At this time, we're just waiting on the Board of Public Works approval, hoping to have that by the end of the year. And once it's in place, we'll move forward with the installation, have more details at that time, probably next meeting.
Good. Dave, finally, Water.
Okay, Water. November 2017, average water usage was 328,000 gallons per day. December 2017, average water usage so far has been 319,000 gallons per day. Rainfall total for November 2017 was 1.5, and rainfall total so far for December 2017 is 0.3.
Use some water coming out of the sky. Chief Gossage, you're up.
Good evening. I'm gonna start off first with talking about shopping with a cop that was just passed Sunday, Saturday, December 9th. The generosity and assistance from the business owners and the residents of Hampstead was just truly remarkable. We made a very special Christmas for five families and 11 of their children. Not only were gifts purchased and clothing, we also provided the meal. Special thanks goes out to Cheryl Rhines, Finance Administrator for the town of Hampstead. If it wasn't for her, we probably wouldn't be able to keep all this organized. We kept her pretty busy with constant donations coming in, withdrawing money out, gift cards, what have you. Such a pride, it's a vacation now, Mayor. I'm gonna switch up a little bit. I'm not trying to rock the boat here, but I came from a very large department where succession planning is very much encouraged, and I do believe it's important to, you know, develop future leaders for the future. So actually Sergeant Bob Schwartz is gonna finish the police report tonight, and he's prepared himself, and there goes Bob.
Good evening, everybody. First of all, Mr. Mayor, thank you for the moment of silence for our fallen brothers and law enforcement. We'll start off with traffic safety for the month of November. Officers wrote 208 warnings and citations. Something to remember for everybody, cell phones is $83 if you get a traffic ticket. The way the law is written, if you have the cellphone in your hand while the vehicle's in motion, it's a violation. So go to Walmart, get a pop socket, put it on your dash, please, okay? The other thing is VIP. Most people don't know this. When the state of Maryland asks you to redo your vehicle missions every year, it's $14. If you get stopped, it's a citation, it's $150. So go over to VIP and Westminster, get that squared away. It's a lot cheaper that way. 10 crashes were reported on our streets. Two were on the bypass at Route 42. We can sit there as frequently as possible. Those yield signs actually mean yield, okay? So slow down as you come into the traffic circle. Community involvement, officers conducted 190 patrol checks of businesses and schools. Officers get out on foot, pulling doors at night, and also go into the schools during the day and see the children. It's really nice to go in the schools, and the kids are very happy to have us there. Serious crime for November, we had one assault with mutual charges filed. We had three residential burglaries. One was charged, and the other one's charge is pending. We remind citizens, please don't post on social media when you go away. People use that as a crime of opportunity. Post your pictures when you get home, okay? We had nine arrests for the month of November, five for serious traffic violations, to include suspended provoked drivers and unlicensed drivers. Three of those arrests were made off of our license tag reader, which is on one of our cars, okay? We had one DUI, one possession of CDS distribution, one for CDS, not marijuana, and one for possession of a deadly weapon. For community policing, Officer Oram and I attended the Carroll County Sheriff's Office opening of their train academy at the old North Carroll High School. Members of the council, Tammy, we were all there. They've done a very nice job for a very limited amount of money. They've done a very good job in that building. As a graduate of North Carroll High School, I'm glad to see that the building's actually being used again. We have a recruit in there. They are on Week 4, and our recruit's doing very well, according to Director Holland. Officer Winkie, myself, did a safety talk for the Spring Garden Safety Patrol. We had an awful lot of fun. It's fun to sit there with the kids and hand out some of our gear, let them see it and understand what we do, and we talked about leadership within that safety patrol. Officer Oram, Officer Thorne, Chief Gossage, along with members of the council and the town, did the Hampstead Linteries field trip here at Town Hall. Half the kids go out with the police. We get to talk about police work in the cars, and the rest of the kids come in here and learn how local government works, because local government works. Officer Thorne has done an excellent job with shopping with a cop this year. He took over the reins in August. Again, I wanna say how thankful we are as a department for the electeds, for their help, as well as the citizens. We couldn't have done it without you. We had a record year this year to really help these families out that were in need. So heartfelt thank you from our department to you guys. Officer Cranshaw graduated from the Critical Incident Management Team. It's a new training that's required by the state of Maryland to help people in crisis, whether it's alcohol or drug abuse, or just having some emotional problems. We have now, we have two officers trained, and the plan is to have all the officers trained within the next couple of years. Officer Thorne, Officer Oram, Officer Winkie, and I attended the certification for our recertification rotation. That's good through 2018. And again, Cheryl did an excellent job. Please pass that along to her. She took the time, every time we called, to come in and talk about things, how to work the budget out and that kind of thing. So that's all I have, unless anybody has any questions.
Well done. Thank you, Bob.
Thank you.
All right. My comments, you've heard a lot of events touched on in the last... In the last month, from the opening of the police academy to town lighting and the Christmas tree, which was a great event. Our thanks to the fire department. Year after year, they lend us the use of their truck, and we get Santa safely down Main Street, and it's a... Just the crowd grows every year, and there was no reason not to be there this year with the weather. So it was really well done, Marlene and your crew. I mean, it just adds to the whole atmosphere, that event. Shopping with a cop, I will say, was the 10th annual one, and it's just really grown over the years, and it's just amazing when you're walking around with the kids. You know, there's not a lot of fluff on these shopping lists. There's a lot of clothes and just personal needs kind of things that are on these lists. They're not typically allowed to shop for themselves, they have to shop for family members. And that's one of the policing duties that our policemen have, is to make sure they're sticking to the list. But it's just neat also to see while you're there, you know, we have somebody manning the cash register, and people just are walking up and slipping a five, a 10, a 20, or more to the people, to our cops, basically, as they're going along to the event. So it's really been neat to see, and it's really neat to be a part of that. And then the... All the activity that goes on when Santa arrives, and then all the wrapping that goes on in the back, it's just... It's interesting, the logistics and how tight the space is in the back of a Walmart. It's not a lot of open space, because they don't make any money back there. So it was really well done. In the upcoming event, we all have Carroll County MML, Maryland Municipal League is gonna be having their Legislative Priority Dinner in Union Bridge this Thursday night, so most of us will be attending that. And then hopefully, after our Christmas party on Saturday night, things slow down just a touch for about 10 days in there, and then we'll get back at it in the new year. So with the end of this year, it's a little bit of a bittersweet time, but Roger Steger's in the back. And Roger has served as our Director of Public Works for, I don't know, 30... I don't know how long, public director, but in our Public Works Department for over 30 years. 32?
32.
32 years. And he's a quiet gentleman, and very stoic, and just, you know, an everyday man, and our Public Works Department is a much better place because of his involvement and because of his leadership. So I've got a proclamation in a little platform, if you wouldn't mind coming on up with his lovely bride, Mary Alice, as well. I might take a picture, and I know you will smile.
So, our proclamation, whereas Roger Steger has served with distinction in our Public Works Department from November of 1985 to the end of this year, December of 17. Whereas for 32 years, Roger Steger has consistently exhibited professional service and the highest quality work standards, whether dealing with the routine tasks of the department for the numerous water system and infrastructure improvement projects, and one just need ride up and down Main Street to see everything that's been going on. Roger has shown leadership in hiring, promoting, developing, and training, and award-winning department that will continue to serve the citizens of Hampstead for many more years to come, and there's more of that to come later tonight. Roger, through his selfless dedication, helped improve the quality of life in our town through his outstanding Public Works service. These guys are very visible, meaning the police department. These guys are walking around and running around in their white pickup trucks, not near as visible, but everything they do is just as important. Alls you need to have is that one time where the water doesn't turn on and you get flooded with phone calls. Now therefore, I, Christopher Nevin, Mayor of the town of Hampstead, wish our friend Roger all the best in his future endeavors, and hereby proclaim today, December 12th, it's Roger Steger, Day in the town of Hampstead. And he also gets this distinguished service award, which has the town key on it.
Nice.
And it says, "In recognition and appreciation of your 32 years of dedicated service as an employee of the Hampstead Department of Public Works, presented the 12th day of December 2017." So there you get that as well. And let's... I'll take a picture. Thank you.
Thank you again.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Senator. Well done. Appreciate it. So you can get this safely out. So, under the order of succession planning that the chief mentioned there, we do talk about it, even in a small town. And so Kevin Han, who's sitting here, will be moving on to the position of Superintendent of the Hampstead Public Works Department, and then Toby David will be the Assistant Superintendent. And Toby, stand up back there, because nobody knows you.
Oh, everybody knows Toby.
So, but I think, how long you been with us?
14 and a half years.
And he started as just a puppy. Yeah, very young guy, and good with his hands. He's come a long way, and certified water operator, Level 3, and very deserving of the promotion. So I'll make a request that there be a motion to promote Kevin to the position of Superintendent, and Toby to the position of Assistant Superintendent.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? There you go. All right. Congratulations. Well deserved, guys. Now, we have the appointment of Carol Irvin to the Hampstead Board of Zoning Appeals for a term of three years, which would go until, I guess, 2020 now. It's hard to believe. Carol's served as well as an alternate on the Planning and Zoning... Board of Zoning Appeals, and I think she's moved up into the permanent position, and here we are, reappointing her for a term of three years. Submit.
Second.
Take your pick. Any discussion on Carol's reappointment? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you. Now, a presentation by Florida Rock Properties, a request of changes to the Hampstead Town Code. Is that gonna be you?
I'm not sure, but we're certainly prepared to do something if...
Sure, why not?
We have quite a few folks from FRP Development here. The facilities, the current, the community, Tom Davis, the land planner. the community, and Tom Davis, the land planner, and we have been working with the Planning Commission as...
Let's do a favor. Since we're recording and the camera's over there, move yourself that way.
Very good.
Stand by the microphone so we can see a profile. Thank you, sir.
For all, you know, 100-some people that'll look at that.
Very good. So, for the record, Jay Brooks Leahy, Delaney Leahy, Curtison Beach, and FRP Development has been working with the Planning Commission, back and forth at four different public meetings concerning the development that we wish to do at the property that was zoned R-7500 some time ago, as I think many of you know. And we presented some concept plans with a lot of detail on it, and we also explained to the Planning Commission in these series of meetings, some of the changes that we would need or we'd ask for in the ordinance. And there was a lot of back and forth, as I said, and I think at the end of the day, the last meeting, the Planning Commission, I believe, was satisfied with where we were. And so now formally, there is a petition that Michelle Ostrander has prepared that I think has been presented, a proposed ordinance. And at this point, as I understand the procedure, the mayor and council would formally just refer to the Planning Commission, and then the Planning Commission would actually make a formal recommendation. And then at a later time, with due publication, there would be a public hearing in front of this body, which would probably be early February at this point, probably the earliest, based on publication. So that's where we're at, and I'm happy to walk through some of the changes if the mayor and council would like at this point for us to do so.
Your call, gang.
Jim.
Yeah.
Jim.
I do.
Might as well.
All right, well.
Start the education process for these guys.
Start the education process. The first change requested is in this Section 135-235, where formerly, for some reason, three-bedroom multifamily units, which in this case would be townhouses in our plans, our plans, incidentally, our planned unit development that we've been working on, in which we have presented to the Planning Commission, just concept plans at this point, obviously, it's single-family homes and some townhomes. There's no multifamily, not multifamily in the terms of apartments, so it's strictly single-family and townhomes. The old ordinance had three-bedroom multifamilies, which included townhouses, in the ordinance, were considered the equivalent of 1.5 units. And so that didn't seem to make any sense, and so we have requested that that be modified so that two- and three-bedroom units count as one unit. And so that was the first request. The second series of quests, of requests are in the chart at 135-240, and there were some minor tweaks to the lot area, the lot width, the front yard and the side yard. And there was quite a bit of back and forth with the Planning Commission on all these tweaks. And basically, the major reason for this is that with modern planning and what modern people want in these developments is we wanted to be able to, to give them bigger houses on smaller, somewhat smaller lots, just the way the planning works out. And I could have other members address that if you wanted some more information about that, but, so that's the second major change, where some minor tweaking to the, to the lot sizes, the lot widths, the front yards and the side yards. And it just works better, and we were able to show that, I think, at the Planning Commission with the actual designs that we have, the concept designs, the way we have a design, it just, it works better. The third...
It's my understanding you all did a field trip.
Yes, part of the four meetings included a, a field trip with the Planning Commission, which complied with open meetings law, where actually the FRP folks, I didn't participate in that, but we went on a field trip and showed them other developments, and I think that was helpful, I think, for the Planning Commission. I will say we weren't able to convince them to, to agree to the side yards we were asking for, but at least it was helpful. And then I think the third major change in the ordinance has to do with the maximal height of buildings, changing that to making it three stories and 45 feet high. A lot of the reason for that is that you can build a much nicer product by having that third floor and also having decent peaks on your roofs. If you, under the old ordinance, you ended up having townhouses. If they're going to be built, they would be on those flat roofs or just very small peaks. So that just makes for a much nicer product and a, and a better, a better townhouse with more room in it, that you, so that was the third major request. And so that, those are the changes in this ordinance that I think you have in front of you. And I know we're happy to answer any questions members may have.
Before anyone else on the council chimes in, can I just give you a quick synopsis of how we came up with these numbers? As you, the numbers that are on here, most of them are not the ones that Florida Rock asked for. They're compromises between our old code and what Florida Rock was requesting. As they said, what people are looking for these days are bigger houses on smaller lots. What we stressed to them was possibly in other areas of the state, but we didn't think that was right in Hampstead, so they needed the bigger lots. Another thing that was stressed throughout these discussions was the fact that we can't change our code just for one developer, that whatever we change in the code, it's going to apply to the next guy that comes along. What we did is we took our existing numbers in our code for a PUD. We compared them to our existing R-7500 district. We also took them and compared our numbers with the numbers used by Carroll County for both single-family homes and PUD developments. Some of those places, the numbers didn't jive correctly, or seemed like ours were out of line. For example, our PUD front yard setback is, was 30 feet, where a R-7500 district, it's only 25 feet. Didn't really understand the reasoning for that, so that's why we cut it back to 25. They were requesting side yards of seven and a half feet per house. We were not going to do that. We were going to do 10 feet per house, combined 20, where right now it's 10 feet per house with a combined 25. So basically, it's knocking five feet off. We did do the field trip. We went and looked at a community in Baltimore County, in Reisterstown, where the side setbacks were 10 feet each, 20 feet combined. It looked okay. One thing, if you looked at their concept plan, most of the development is on curves. The roads are not straight. They're curved roads. So what you have in these houses is, it would be 20 feet at one point, but gets larger as it goes back on the curve. Another thing that we took into consideration is the fact that it is a PUD development. They're required to have at least 25% open space. So if we could give them a little bit, it would help out with more open space. And these numbers, these are just our recommendations to the council. It's basically was a compromise between the Planning and Zoning Commission and Florida Rock.
As far as process, this will go formally to you in your December meeting, or are you waiting until January?
I guess we'll come in December.
Come December.
All right. Are we coming back here in January, or we'll wait until February?
I think it's going to be February because Michelle indicated that the, the publication notice for the public hearing meant we have to do it February.
Thank you, yes.
Okay. So there'll be a public hearing before a council meeting in February, and then we would consider the introduced ordinance that we will take up in a couple of minutes.
I think the only concern that I have is that it, it goes for every builder from there. We're changing our code for now on, so every builder that, you know, comes on after Florida Rock, you know, that's their standard.
Correct. I understand.
And that's, this is, some of these are quite a change, you know, because if you're looking at, you know, this one end dwelling, you know, the minimum lot area going from 5,500 feet down to 4,000, you know, that's, that's a 27, that's a 27, 28% decrease.
Right, on the townhomes.
That's, that's, that's quite a decrease. So, and the minimum lot width, you know, going from, from 55 to 40, again, yeah, that's, that's quite a decrease.
But those numbers are, yes, looking at the end units on townhomes.
And I, and I, I get what they're saying. Yeah, that's great in Columbia, and it's, it's great in Reisterstown, it's great in Baltimore, you know, more, more houses, you know, because I have...
I understand you 100% Joe.
I have a brother-in-law that lives in Elk Ridge, and he bought a great big house on a small lot, and he loves every single minute of it because he takes a weed whacker to cut his grass.
Right.
And he lives in a five-bedroom house, so.
I understand, I'm with you 100%. I understand.
And I don't think that flies in Hampstead.
How many acres of open space are you planning on having?
Exactly, the exact number, never have up the top of my head, but it's got to be, I mean, it's well over 20 or 25%.
Well over.
And another thing just to point out, Sean Davis, Rich Ace, that's what I'm saying. Your PUD ordinance allows you much greater design control with these types of developments. So yes, this ordinance, if anybody comes in for a future PUD, then they would be able to take advantage of these changes as well. But unlike any other zoning specification you have, the PUD gives the power to the Planning and Zoning Commission to really review the design and ask for more design, ask for better design. So that, that power, I mean, literally, the Planning and Zoning Commission has, is the only one who has that hammer. That's really important to remember when you're looking at this.
Right.
That's a good point, because there's a lot of discussion in the Planning Commission as opposed to an R-75 or an R-10 where, you know, if you meet the requirements, you...
That's my concern, so.
Only having a few days to look at this, the density calculation, I'd, I'd like to find out what the history was on why, why the density calculation was put in there. I heard someone proffer that it might be because of the overcrowded schools, but I'm, I went back and looked, and it was changed in 1989, prior to the schools being overcrowded. It may have been based on what the county code was. Also, in 1989, they reduced the maximum number of houses per acre from six to four, so that's been in effect. The other thing is that every single PUD that we've had in Hampstead that I'm aware of was R-10,000. So your property was zoned R-7500, or changed R-7500. Like I said, every other one was R-10,000. So just comparing the old numbers to R-7500 might not make sense because R-10,000s can be done as a PUD as well. So I'll, I'll take that into consideration when I'm looking at these numbers and making the decision. I have been in favor of raising the height regulation for a long time. However, making a change in this code does not relieve you from the requirement under 135-241 maximum height. And then there, it says that for every half foot over 40 feet, I'm sorry, for every, it's said here that the, in any R and B district, the height of any building may extend to three stories, but not over 40 feet. So there'll be, there'll be a discrepancy there between our code. If the side yard is increased and width a half foot for each additional foot, so that would mean you'd have to, according to what's in here now. So I think what we need is a holistic look at the height regulations in all of Chapter 135, to make sure that it's consistent and congruent, so that we don't have this conflict, okay? There are at least five other sections that limit that. And then with the density calculation, we have our impact fees that are based on dwelling units, and I'm not sure if the dwelling, the definition of a dwelling unit is considered because we talk about in this section that we want to change the numbers, we call that a dwelling unit, and in another section of the code where we talk about our impact fees, we also call, we talk about dwelling units. So was the intention is that one, that extra .5 go into that calculation? It's not clear from my brief reading of the code, but I'd have to go back and look at it again.
My question to that, if, if that were the case, then why only multifamily and apartments? Why would that 1.5 not apply to a three-bedroom, single-family?
Again, we'd have to go look at what the history was. I've been around a long time, but it wasn't around in 89. Not here.
I think it was specific to Roberts Fields was coming on board, and it was a way to get around, because they're mostly three bedrooms, but it was a way to get around calling it a three-bedroom versus a two-bedroom.
Yeah.
And, and to comply with the PUD regulations as they existed back then.
Yeah.
We really haven't had much interaction with a PUD regulation since, you know, the late...
No Care Farm, Section 4, yeah. So I, I just want to look at the history on it. From the standpoint of a three-bedroom townhouse versus a three or four-bedroom house, why is that counted as only one dwelling unit and a multifamily is counted as one and a half? I'm, I'm not sure. That's all I have.
Anything else? Tammy took good notes. You guys made a good presentation. We'll be...
We were told to be short, and I thought we were.
You did a good job. So the rest of the audience, thanks you. And we'll see you at the Planning and Zoning meeting, and then back here in February, and there'll be some, I guess, conversation between you and Tammy in the interim. So appreciate it. Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ordinances and resolutions? Oh, first up, introduction of ordinance 521. I think you can still introduce it. There's some work to be done, and we'll work, work to make sure that we...
I have one question of Councilman Renahan.
Yes.
To address your concern, it sounded like one of your biggest concerns was the end dwelling unit of a townhouse.
Yes.
And obviously, a change would apply to everybody. With the incident of Florida Rock, they plan on having pocket parks where the land that would typically own, that the, the in-unit of a townhouse would typically own, in their development, the HOA would own. So is your, your concern about the homeowner owning a bigger piece of property, or if, for example, this was amended to say end dwelling would be this, but open space would be required by the in-unit of a townhouse?
Mine is the, the going from 5,500 down to 4,000 feet, you know, for the, for the minimum, for the minimum lot area.
Of an in-unit?
Yeah, exactly.
But I'm saying, is it because you want the homeowner to own it, or, for example, would it address your concerns if the code stated there needed to be some open space by an in-unit?
Correct, yes.
And I think that is addressed on the corner lots, where there's an additional 10 feet outside of the actual lot on every corner, single-family and townhomes. But it does not show in the town code. It was in their presentation.
So maybe we could amend that portion.
Again, the problem is going forward.
I know, I understand, yeah.
And I, I agree, that's quite a reduction.
So some, some good catches. A motion to introduce ordinance 521.
I'll make a motion to introduce ordinance number 521.
Second.
Further discussion?
Yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right. It's introduced, and we're on to the next step. Introduction of ordinance 520, excuse me, in ord, 522, an ordinance to amend Chapter 135 of the Hampstead Code regarding uses in the Business General Zoning District.
Make a motion to discuss.
To discuss, or?
Well, I'll make a motion to introduce, but just for discussion.
Second.
All right. Comment? Sounds like you got one.
Yeah, I'm, so, first of all, this should actually become T, and the one that's T should become U, okay? It's just the, the way the code's written. The last one's the catch-all, so the catch-all should stay on the end, okay? My concern about this is I'd like to know if the zoning administrators looked at all the other BG property that we have in the town to find out how this might impact our development of property throughout the rest of town that's zoned BG.
And I have, and that is the main reason we want to make sure it's not in the Main Street revitalization area. So the other property we have is, of course, Hampstead Marketplace, which is already developed. It's a, it's a shopping center, so something like this wouldn't be able to be built there. And then you have Business General right south of town. So to me, if you make sure it doesn't happen in the Main Street revitalization area, that addresses everything from Northwoods Trail to the Northern Railroad Track.
There's an undeveloped piece of property next to Autozone. That's not, not true.
But that's in the Main Street revitalization area. Oh, Autozone, I'm sorry.
Autozone's on the other end of town, up near Marketplace.
I figure.
Okay, and then...
That's not big enough. It's not a suitable, I mean, it's not.
You and I say it's not, but I've seen these things go up in places that...
So then maybe we make a motion that it's got to have a certain size acreage, and then that'll align that fear. There you go.
That's what I'm saying. I, I want to carefully look at the rest of the BG property, because I don't want to, I don't want to shoot ourselves in the foot.
And you're saying that Article 1, where it says Section 135-123U, that you think that should be T?
I think what's currently T should become U, and what, this should become T. Do you follow that?
I think so.
I'll, I'll, I'll address it with Tammy after the meeting.
Okay. So, we have a motion in the second discussion. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Tammy made those notes. Lastly, introduction of petition for the Development Rights and Responsibilities Agreement between the Town of Hampstead and Beckley Ventures LLC. Got a lot of development and stuff going on.
Buck Shaker's making all kinds of money tonight.
Buck, you ready to balk across the aisle here? Any, Tammy, any comment to this? Any, Tammy, any comment to this?
The Developers Rights and Responsibility Agreement?
Yes.
This is the first time, the first time the town will have. We just gave ourselves permission to vote on one. And Michelle and I have met with Florida Rock on several, Florida Rock, sorry, wrong one, have met with Clark Schaefer on several occasions to discuss what's in, in the DRRA, which is basically giving the developer some reassurance if they choose to develop the property, that we will abide by our code and our regulations and allow certain things to occur. Of course, there's something, there's certain things that we don't have control over, but what we can, we're basically just giving them positive feedback that we'll work with them when they choose to develop the property. Now, this property in question, they knew need to bring water to the town when they develop the property. So, they wanted to have an agreement in place, so if they spend the money to look for water, and then, of course, bring water to the town when they annex into town, they just wanted some reassurance from the, from the town that we would work with them for the development.
And what's the process for this one? We're introducing tonight, then what?
This doesn't go to Planning and Zoning. You introduce, you have to have a public hearing, and then you approve.
And the public hearing be next month?
Yes.
Okay. All right.
Make a motion to introduce.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So, for everybody out there, there's a, the Florida Rock Properties is out of Hawksville Road on the south end side, on the other side of the bypass, that they're looking at a subdivision, a residential subdivision there, and then Powers Brothers, who are in the audience tonight, are looking at a residential subdivision on the east side of Main Street, up off of Upper Beckleysville Road, which would back up to the park. So, it's interesting that both, both are very well-capitalized, well-regarded, well-known developers in the marketplace, and that this is the first time in, since the 90s, that we've had a lot of residential subdivision interest in the Town of Hampstead. And I think it goes to show, A, that we have the infrastructure to support it. Clearly, with the bypass there, it's a different, much different animal than back in the 80s and 90s, when things were being developed with traffic choked on Main Street all the way throughout. The water system is, is up and running in a much better footing and much better capacity, much better quality, much better efficiency with the new water line than it ever was before. And Powers Brothers would have to bring on a well to accommodate the growth they're talking about. Police Department, we can certainly, if we bring on that many houses, expand by another officer or two, should it be needed.
Public Works.
And we'll see about Public Works, too, yeah. They'll have another well to take care of. But, and then, the other part is schools, and it's pretty clear that we have the room to accommodate schools, and there's been absolutely no growth in Carroll County, where you've seen growth in other counties. And, and I, you know, and not that all these houses are growing up here overnight. This is a, this is a process that will take some time, and I think you're looking at five-to-eight-year build-outs, depending upon how the market goes. So, long-term planning and a process that will move through in an orderly fashion, keep Hampstead the small town that it always has been, and will, I think, improve the quality, continue to improve the quality of life here. So, that's my take on that. We have a couple of, we have a Cub Scout hanging out with us tonight, I guess for a merit badge. That would be over here on the left. Huh?
A few, deer in over there, too.
Okay, so you guys have to stand up, and we have the Boy Scout, who I already warned had to stand up. So, all right, we'll start over here with your name and your troop.
Karen.
Last name?
Frederickson.
Troop number?
451.
Which is out of?
Hereford.
Hereford, welcome aboard. All right. Young guys in the back.
Zach Reeves, Troop 451, out of Hereford.
Lori Watson, Troop 451, out of Hereford.
Ryan Joe, Troop 451, out of Hereford.
Very good. I, back in the day, there were several scouts that I knew who became Eagles, so if that's on your to-do list, I wish you well with that. And the young man in front of us.
Jake Beresocks, I am from Troop 9, in Upper Maryland.
Very good. And what's, all right, so you don't get off that easy if you go...
We have one more.
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize. Loudly.
Henry England, Troop 451, Hereford.
All right, well done. Okay, I'll let you off easy. But it's good, it's good to see you all here, and thank you for coming. If you want to ask any questions afterward, we're hanging out and around. Any public comments tonight? Few folks hanging out? No, nothing? Well, a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year to all, a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second.